Hey, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the commissioners' meeting for Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. I'd ask that you join me in a moment of silent reflection, please. Your pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, whose majesty stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call.
There is no one else joining us permanently at this time.
Okay, executive session announcement.
There have been no executive sessions since our last meeting on Tuesday. No, it would have been longer ago than that. Yeah, the 14th. No executive sessions were held.
Call for the approval of the Board of Commissioners' meeting minutes 2020 and 2022, 312 and 314.
And I apologize, that's a typo on your agenda. It should be 227 and 229. We already approved the 20th and the 22nd last week. My apologies. You need to hold them till Thursday. We can certainly do that. The 27th and 29th went with the agenda packet last Thursday, and the 12th and the 14th would have just been, maybe not this morning. We can hold them all until Thursday. Yeah.
Open up the public comment.
Reverend Roy Stewart, Logan V, Precinct Altoona, and I'm an elected committeeman on the Blair County Republican Committee. I want to commend the commissioners for their effort to really take hard fiscal look at the budget and the expenditures. I certainly appreciate that. And like the little lady who spoke, I think, last week, the way when the tax bill came, you know, my taxes were higher, too. And that's kind of a jolt when you start seeing that, and I'm sure other entities are going to be raising those. So again, I appreciate the commissioners taking a hard look at that. One of the issues I have that I wanted to share, and I think both the commissioners here today know about it, is this whole concern with the elections. I've been doing a study group with my people at our churches on this whole AI and transhumanist stuff that's looking at all of the involvement in Zoom and other kinds of devices and technologies compared to a very traditional constitutional understanding. And I think that impacts pretty heavily on elections and on voting. And so a request I have before I think I can form my mind firmly around things is to get an itemization of exactly what it costs to purchase the voting machines throughout Blair County and the cost of all upgrades for software. I was here when the commissioners approved the coding expenditure for the coming elections, and that just made me wonder, you know, what kind of other costs are involved in this? And if we could get an itemization of that, that would give a sound basis for looking at what the difference might be between continuing with voting machines or going to the paper ballot approach that would allow a little bit more concerted audit and evaluation of the cast ballots. But I think it's important to know just what the total cost to the county was. So I would ask the commissioners to consider that for perhaps a report to the county. But I think I'm under the three minutes. That's tough for an old 50-year-old pastor, 50-year pastor, to keep within three minutes, but I think I did it.
Three seconds to spare. Good job.
Amen.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, Commissioner, comment.
Thank you. I just would like to point out that today is the first day of spring, despite the fact that there was snow. But this is a good sign, and it is something that we can all be glad. Thank you.
As you're aware, we're trying something new, and that's something new is that we try to pick a topic or get a topic from the community to discuss in open forum so that you can see some of the process that we go through and also take in some of the input from the constituents of this county. So we had one on trails, which was very lively. It lasted three weeks. So our next one will be Thursday, March 28th, and that's, we will be discussing the opioid settlement money and funds. So just if you're interested, the 28th, we're going to have an open discussion, and you're welcome to join us. With that, if you could run us through the consent agenda, please.
For today's consent agenda for your consideration is Resolution Number 143. It's the payment of four warrant lists as outlined in your agenda in Item A. It's ratification of 10 warrant lists as outlined in Item B. This is the budget transfers for 2024 in Items C, D, E, and F, resignations, employments, and status changes in letters G, H, and I respectively.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Staff reports prison is the warden here. They're always in the back. Good afternoon.
Requesting approval of change order number one received from Montgomery Technology Systems LLC for the replacement of the slide gate and adjacent fencing at the prison in a total amount of $32,650.
Any comments or questions?
One item of note on this, that prison project that we are, that this change order is pertaining to is the last remaining item left in the 2017 bond. I do believe that even after all of the expenditures for the large security upgrade project are complete, there would be the $32,650 could come from the bond amount. And I believe, shout out to our controller, if he's here, and our treasurer, I believe that that's due to the change in that account becoming a money market and the interest rate. So that is basically, we're paying this change order as well as some of the remainder of the project on interest, which is very good. They were watching out for us there. We're getting a very good interest rate on that account.
Okay. Great, thank you. Register Wills, Anita. Afternoon.
I'm here requesting approval of the quote received from Optical Storage Solutions, Inc., for professional services to migrate the Landex images and data from existing servers to a new server configuration in the total amount of $2,500 to be paid from the Recorder's Record Improvement Fund.
Any comments or questions, Anita?
Nope, this is a wonderful thing.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Social services.
Before I make my formal request, I'd like to introduce Scott Durbin, and he's going to reflect on the Team Effort Program along with a short video and the accomplishments of the program in the summer of 2023.
Appreciate your time. Just a short few things on our Team Effort group. Dave, I know you're new, and I don't know how familiar you are with the Team Effort Project, but we've been hosting here at Blair County for the last since 2013. And we house them over near Penn State Altoona in dormitory-style apartments. And currently, this year, every year, it's been growing, but we're expecting over 700. Campers is what they call, they come here for mission work and repairs and all kind of projects that I work with Harry Houck, a Team Effort leader here locally. And just reading through the information that you have, they worked somewhere between 30 and 35 different addresses last year. So a typical week is Sunday evening, they get here, they get welcomed at Pennview, and then they get settled in their units. They have fellowship that night, and then Monday morning, we cook breakfast every morning for the group. On an average of about 100 people come in every week, and then on that, they work three and a half days, they get some pleasure time half of Thursday, and all day Friday, they go to Canoe Creek, they go to Curve Games, they go to the Groso Park, they just enjoy a lot of the things that we have to offer in Blair County. And then Friday is a fun day, Saturday, continental breakfast, everybody packs up, we leave. And then Saturday is our prepare for the next group. So Saturday is our sanitation day. They have a group of counselors that comes here for the entire time, from the first week of June to the end of July. And they're coordinating the construction projects with Harry, the different churches in the area, buying material, getting the paint. We store their tools and everything here locally for them so they don't have to drag everything around. But it's very exciting to see how these people come from as far as Florida and as far as Michigan, Kentucky, and they take a week off work and they come here to work on our properties. So this money has just been an absolute boost to what we can do in a short period of time. And at this time, I'll introduce Harry Houck. He can introduce a few people from Team Effort locally that helps him out. They're based out of Florida, out of Jacksonville. He makes a trip down every year to coordinate everything with Justin Jones, the coordinator and owner of Team Effort.
Good afternoon, commissioners.
Good afternoon.
First thing I want to do is thank you for the past couple of years for granting us the money because it goes to a very good cause. And if you don't know, you haven't been here before, Team Effort's been around for 31 years total since they started this mission. They've been in Altoona for 14 years, and I've been with them 13 years as their contractor. So my part of the job is to check the sites out, make sure everything's going okay, get permits when they're needed. I organize churches to feed them on Monday nights. And we just take the leaders in, there'll be anywhere from five to nine leaders that stay here the whole entire eight weeks. And we kind of take them under our wing, my wife and I, my wife was a big part of this also. We take them under our wing as like they're part of our family. So we do things with them when they're not working with Team Effort. We've seen a lot of things happen through the summers with people that can't afford to do things, people are going to get evicted, and some of those pictures you'll see, if work wasn't done, they were getting evicted out of their homes. In total, the 13 years, we have seen over 9,000 leaders, preschoolers, church pastors come through our area. And this year, there's eight camps again this year throughout the United States. I'm not sure where they're all at this year because they change. But I very much appreciate what you can do, and I always tell them, you know, when you all leave here, that paint's going to fade and the wood's going to rot, but the people are going to have memories of what was done and how they were blessed by this team coming in. So I appreciate it, and I would like to ask John Eichelberger to come next.
Hey, everybody. Good to see you. I'll just be brief. I have supported Team Effort for a number of years and try to help with some things here and there, but I'm a member of the Board of Habitat for Humanity, and as you may know, we're closing the Habitat for Humanity chapter here in Blair County, and we have some leftover funds. We're looking for a place to do, put the money where it would reflect what we had tried to do as a Habitat chapter for years, and Team Effort fits that bill. It's a Christian organization, just like Habitat is, and they come in, they do improvements to homes, the community, help people sustain their lives there longer, as long as possible. And we're very happy to provide some money for them. So we had set up a fund through the Central Pennsylvania Community Foundation and the Gerald R. Harrington Habitat Fund, and we're going to give up to $10,000 a year based on receipts to this organization, and we've put $100,000 in so far. So it'll be, I think, a pretty significant help for them times ahead. And I know when you're looking at public funds, you want to make sure that things are sustainable for that organization and they have community support in other ways. And they certainly do many ways, but they do hear from us as well. So we're very happy with them. Anything you can do would be appreciated. And I think we have, I know we have a couple pastors here. Harry, did you want me to? Pastor John Collins is here. Did you want to say anything, John? The churches do a tremendous amount of support work with this as well. And Larry Weaver is here, Pastor Weaver, I've been active with him for years. And Dave and Chief, I don't know who's, we have a couple other folks in the back that have been supportive. So you have Chief Morell here from the city and Dave Ellis from the City Councilman here as well. So can see it's a well-received program. Thanks again for your consideration.
Thank you.
And I believe Missy's going to show a video, so it is going to be shown on the back wall there. I'll grab the lights, Missy.
Team Effort missions, we want to show people the love of Jesus, and so we do that by helping people in need.
We've been doing it for 13 years. Whenever Doug, the founder of Team Effort, contacted us to do it, we get a whole new group of kids every summer, our leaders, every summer can average anywhere from five. I think we've had up to as many as nine, and they become our family for eight weeks.
We've worked through probably about 20, I'd say, sites, 20 different sites and 20 different homes, and we do things ranging from painting to building decks to landscaping, things like that.
Well, we've been around the Blair County area, probably five, six, seven, eight different cities here in the Blair County area. And project-wise, I would have to say it would have to be over 1,000 easy in 13 years.
So this is Mr. Clem's house, and whenever we started, it was yellow, and we've completely redone the outside of the house, so now it's gray, light gray in the middle and dark gray on the trim. And so his house was, I believe, a tan color, a tan gray color, and he wanted it to be blue. So we've repainted the house this dark blue color for him, and we're touching up all of the trim in white. We completely replaced the side of the shed. There was a hole like this big, and it was completely rotted. So we just replaced all of this for her.
I've been able to see a lot of growth, both on the campers level and also the projects that we've been able to do. There's always at least one student who has never swung a hammer a day in their life, and then by the end of the week, they're like, move out of the way, I got the circular saw. And so you're just like, okay. The amazing thing that I've found about Team Effort is their ability to bring together all sorts of denominations. So that is probably my favorite part about this, is seeing everybody come together and seeing that unity in the church.
So this is my first year, first summer, but I just moved churches to First Baptist, and it's my first mission trip that I've been on. But I really enjoyed here. It's very friendly.
And then this year, coming to Altoona was so fun. Of course, like the car rides were awesome and, you know, like connecting with my friends. And, you know, here it's different, like I have no idea who lives here, but like being able to help them when they're in need and, you know, doing the best I can to ensure, like whatever, just happiness, it just, it makes the world a difference.
There's a, you know, the quote I know, like it's a good quote, and it's sometimes the only Bible that people read is your lives. So if these people have, you know, don't really know God, and they see all these people coming to work and to serve other people in the community, then that's, you know, it puts a good impression on God, it puts a good impression on us. So, you know, it's good to spread, to spread God's word, to spread His glory, and ultimately just help heal people around the community.
Okay, so I'm here to request the approval from the County of Blair Affordable Housing Trust Fund Program for the disbursement to Team Effort for low-to-moder income family home renovations in the total amount of $20,000.
Any comments or questions?
This is a great program. I love getting the booklet each year to take a look and see what they've been doing, and we really appreciate all the efforts of the volunteer groups and churches that are helping with this. Thank you.
I would like to just, you know, over this past year and a half, you get into this community and you really start to see, I mean, we're blessed. I mean, we're truly, truly blessed to live here. We have all these individuals who are retired commissioners and senators and people who work in construction and pasture, all of you have your hands full, but yet you take on this, and this has a direct impact on people, people's lives, making them better, being able to make them stay in a home that they may not be able to do that. So I just want to, I personally want to thank all of you for what you do and the impact that you have, and again, I'll say that we're very blessed to have all of you. So thank you very, very much. Good afternoon.
Back to the normal. I am here requesting approval to submit the 2023 Blair County MHIDEI Employees Compensation Plan.
Any comments or questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark.
I have before you today a resolution for approving our EMPG application, resolved by the Board of Commissioners, the County of Blair in Pennsylvania, that it make electronic application through the Electronic Single Application System with PIMA, who serves as the grant administrator for the Federal Emergency Management Agency for the Emergency Management Performance Grant, commonly referred to as EMPG. The grant for fiscal year 2024 begins on October 1st, 2023, ends on October 30th, 2024, be submitted by Chris Fredricksen, who's our operations and training coordinator. The application is for $129,586.53, and it's intended to supplement the salaries and benefits of the emergency management personnel.
Any comments or questions of Mark?
Thank you.
Thank you. Public works, Paul. You guys must all need to get your steps in. You're all sitting in the back, in the back.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Requesting approval of a contract agreement between the County of Blair and Blair Auto Power Equipment to sharpen two blades for the county highway wood chipper in the amount of $30. The reasoning that they are going to do the services, they have the machinery to do it, it takes a different pitch slash slope to sharpen themselves.
Any comments or questions, Paul? All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Children, youth, and families. Hello.
We're requesting approval of the fiscal year 2223 Renewal Purchase of Service Agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families and Lifespan Family Services.
Okay, any comments or questions?
And then we're requesting approval of the fiscal year 2324 Renewal of Purchase Service Agreement and HIPAA Business Associate Agreement between the County of Blair, Blair County Children, Youth, and Families and the Bear Foundation.
Mindy, was this the contract that included the employment language? You made sure that you used the boilerplate?
For Bear?
Yes. Yes, okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
HR, Sandy.
I'm here requesting approval of the PCOP 2023 Audited Payroll Reporting Form for the Pennsylvania Counties Work of Compensation Trust to certify the county's 2023 payroll figures.
Any comments or questions? Thank you. Victim witness.
Good afternoon.
Afternoon.
We are requesting the approval of the VOCA grant application for the period of October 1st, 2024 through September 30th, 2025, in the amount of $100,193.
Any comments or questions?
We're just happy to get these grants.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Thanks. And Nicole.
Yes. For the Commissioner's Office, we're requesting approval of a cancellation request for the auto owner's insurance, which just is the name, it's not auto insurance, that's the name of the insurance group, auto owner's insurance for the builder's risk insurance for the Valley View Park Amphitheater Project. This was a policy that we did have to carry on the Valley View Park Amphitheater Project for stored materials. The effective date would be the date of completion, which was 8/21/23. By submitting this cancellation request, we will receive approximately half of our premium back. That was for a full policy year, but we didn't need the full policy year. Second item today is requesting approval for the acceptance of bids received for the 2024 billboard lease for review and rejection or award according to the accounting code after. I do have, one bidder was received on Friday at 2:00 when bids were opened, Lamar Advertising of Pennsylvania LLC. The bid amount was $4,260 annually, which is approximately double, it's $2,400 a year currently, approximately double the current bidder, and that would be for the next 10 years. I see, we do, I am requesting acceptance, but I see no reason to not award at the same time, so I would be requesting approval, acceptance and approval for the award at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve, accept, and award.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Any old business?
We do have old business. I'm not sure if the warden is headed our way to help us through that.
So requesting approval of the MOU between the County of Blair on behalf of the county of Blair and the Borough of Hollywood to grant access to the jail track.
Any comments or questions?
This was changed to meet your specifications, your request in last Tuesday's meeting now, and with the language in the, which was not included in your packet, I'll get this, I can get this to you, this was an addendum to the agreement, it's the computer network access requirements. In those requirements, it does say that each party has to have, each individual accessing the data needs to have a username and a password, so we will have information on who's accessing. So it combined now does work out and approved, and was approved through legal and IT, so we're good to go. If you want to save this for Thursday or go ahead and approve it today, it's the Board's pleasure.
Okay.
Also requesting approval for the rejection of the bid received for two milk products with our funds for the, requesting your approval for its specifications for milk products and requesting the afterthought.
Okay, any comments or questions? Okay, thanks.
This one, I would ask for approval on the second item today. The bid specifications are ready to go into the newspaper, and the ad in the newspaper and the bidding documents are based off of an ad running on Friday. To do that, though, with the column's new, the newspaper's new submission, we do need about a three-day lead time, so approval today would be nice to have that ad run on Friday, or it'll push the deadline back even further. We would just continue to...
We would just continue to buy milk through a CoStarz vendor until then, but we know the trials and tribulations of that. So if we could have approval of that item today, I would appreciate it.
Okay, I'll make a motion requesting the approval of the bid specifications for the milk products and advertisements.
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, that concludes our meeting. Next Board of Commissioners meeting will be held March 21st at 1:00 PM. Thank you.